I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's go to the consent agenda.
If I could say a few words about the notification of appointments. Page nine. Karen Brown will be our halftime ELL teacher. She has a bachelor's degree from the University of Hartford, the master's degree from the University of New Haven. She comes to us with four years of experience. ELL is a shortage area, so it's never easy to find people for those positions. Also, Tambo Lynn Johnson is going to be a special education teacher here at the high school. She has a bachelor's degree from Mercy College and an MS from Manhattanville. She's coming to us with zero years of experience, a very bright and eager person. We're really glad to have her with us, as with the others. And then also Jennifer Parcell, who you all know. Jennifer's been in the district a long time. And she is backfilling Darlene Fensor's position here at the high school. Remember, Darlene moved to the assistant directorship of special education. So Jennifer, this is her first administrative assignment, and she's going to be backfilling that. She has a bachelor's degree from the University of New Hampshire, an MS from Southern Connecticut, and an MS from Walden University. So we're looking forward to watching Jen grow in her new administrative role. Alan?
She have a little nitty-tale?
Yes. It's pending. Yeah, it's up at the state. And that's it.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Give it a second. Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Moving on to committees and liaison reports. Do any of the committee chairs have any reports to give tonight? Hearing none. We'll move to public participation. Anyone in the public that wishes to speak to the board tonight? Okay. Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the report of the superintendent. Jim?
Yeah, it gives me some pleasure to introduce to you this evening in our audience Tina Craven. Tina is the new reporter for the Monroe Courier. She took the initiative to reach out to me, and we spent about an hour today chatting and getting to know each other, giving her some background information on what we're doing and why we're as good as we are and all those draggy things that I could think of. So I'm really looking forward to seeing Tina and her contributions. I lamented the fact that, you know, as much as we all embrace technology and love what it's doing, there are some downsides to the technology, and that is local newspapers and reporting those events that happen in public settings like this, you know, to the public. And, you know, we've all seen too much that we have not had direct coverage. People are probably relying on online tapes of the meetings and, you know, minutes that get posted and that kind of thing. But you miss the true essence sometimes of the meeting when somebody is not actually physically present to see and to hear what's going on firsthand. So Tina, welcome, and we look forward to developing a relationship with you over the coming years. Review of the fund activity statements for May and June. Gabby, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Just very quickly, insurance. We are, we trended a little bit lower through the end of the fiscal year. Our reserve balance was down compared to last year, but if you recall, we did not budget as much to put into the reserve because of budgetary constraints, for lack of a better term. The other thing is, is that our prescription plan, prescriptions are running quite a bit high, so that Cigna and Ovations are going to look at that, and I think they're going to do some outreach and try to see what's going on, see if it's an issue of not using generics, using, you know, trying to see what kind of wellness plans they can do for our employees. Spending, I had reported that we were going to be at about 120. We're probably going to be closer to about 160 or 170. That will return to the town, and I think that would be good to put into the capital reserve fund, as we've done in the past, because with the Turf Field project, we'll pretty much deplete that fund. So it would probably be a good idea to put the money back in there. Finally, the Turf Field, if you haven't had a chance to go down, and I think Jim will talk more about this, I would really encourage you, because you'll be pretty amazed at what's going on down there. It looks really, really great. And Jack's going to talk to the Stepney Oil Project, and that's going to be completed at the end of this week.
Thursday.
Right.
Project.
And the one warning is, as we move into the new fiscal year, and I did this the past couple of years, our insurance numbers are going to be quite low in terms of what's actually in the reserve. If you recall, we don't have our full complement of employees contributing, because we don't have most of our employees on our payroll in the summer months. With that also said, we had a really large hit in July. We spent about 970,000 in July on claims. So it was a pretty heavy, heavy spend. So hopefully, things will trend better for the rest of the year.
You'll remember last year, we dipped a little bit low in the reserve account as well, for exactly the same reason. And then, I think it was about November or so, we were right back up to force, okay, in terms of that slot target that we want, that we want to be at. So, okay. Any questions for Gabby on that stuff? New hires and an overview of staffing. John would walk us through, if you would, some of the highlights of the whole process this summer.
Sure. Over the summer, in May and June, we hired eight new certified staff members to fill in the resignations and the retirements that we had. And we're really happy with the quality of the people that we have, as Jim talked about today. We did get three resignations for paraprofessionals last week, so we posted those. We're seeing what the internal movements are going to be, and hopefully, we'll be able to have them onboard before school starts. We also got a resignation for one of the Masick nurses. So we, that's already been posted internally, and we had interviews today. So depending on where the bumping goes, it could, there could be an opening in one of our elementary schools, or a middle school, or at St. Jude's, because they've all applied for the job. And the last position that we have open is the math interventionist at the high school. We're waiting for the right person for that. We want someone with a math background. We've been lucky for the last five or six years to have a retired math teacher who was our interventionist, and it's worked real well. So we're, we're kind of waiting for the right person for that. So that's been advertised, too. So, all in all, we're pretty good.
Relatively speaking, this was a very quiet year in terms of hiring. You know, to have eight positions that you had to backfill for various reasons in a district as large as ours is really not a huge number. In fact, it's probably one of the leaner years that we've had in recent years in terms of new hires. So I feel very fortunate that I'm not getting any last-minute resignations for people who are moving or, you know, accepting positions in other districts, that kind of thing, because that always gives us the most angst, is trying to backfill some position, you know, two weeks before school actually starts. So, good. Thanks, John. The Turf Field update. Gabby is absolutely right. If you haven't seen it, it's really a phenomenal sight. Three of the new light poles are up with the lights on top. The fourth one is supposed to be put in tomorrow. There was some concern, the slope of where the foundation for that goes in is a very steep slope right there, and the question was, is there enough earth there to hold this? And so it was determined ultimately that there wasn't, and we needed to reinforce that footing and that foundation, another eight feet or so, right?
Nine.
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Those concrete foundations go 13 feet in the ground. This one is going an additional nine into the ground. So they're going to board that tomorrow, put some reinforced concrete around it as well, and the fourth light should be up. The D zones are paved. The field was leveled today, or checked for level today. It was an interesting thing to watch, that a guy towed behind, in front of him, or behind him actually, as he walked backwards. About a 10-foot pipe, about a four-inch diameter pipe, steel pipe, that was on a chain that rolled as he walked backwards, and they were checking for deviations in elevation, just to see if there were any changes. And I stopped him at one point, and I said, you know, "How much of a deviation are you looking for?" And he said, "Seven sixteenths." And he had a spray can in back, in his back pocket, and any place where he saw a seven sixteenths deviation, he would spray, and Darlene's crew would have to either go and excavate out some material or put material in. He was halfway through the field at that point, and there were no deviations. So the grading on this thing is just an incredible feat, and Darlene has just done a superior job from start to finish. The turf is expected to come onsite tomorrow, the fabric, and that process of laying that down is supposed to begin tomorrow. Now, I hear we're supposed to have some heavy rain tomorrow, possibly. I don't know what that will do. Typically, with the, with the fabric, because the crew that's going to be putting it in is traveling a great distance, you know, they stay in a hotel locally, so they tend to work from dawn until dusk, until the job is done. So we're thinking like a week, eight days, to put the carpet down and that fiber board, remember that concussion board that goes underneath the underlayment there? So probably, within a week's time or 10 days' time, you're going to see a field that actually looks like a field. Now, we're going to get held up a little bit with the track resurfacing, okay? And the reason for the delay in the track resurfacing has to do with how busy track resurfacers are right now. You just can't get the contractors, they're way overbooked. So, you know, we're thinking that they will start in mid-September. We may be able to get some home games in on the field before the track is resurfaced, okay? So we're kind of keeping our fingers crossed. That may be a possibility. If we can, we will certainly take advantage of that and try to get a game or two on, or more if we could, on the field before it's totally finished. So, any questions about the turf? Yeah, really, it's an impressive thing. Yeah. It's been a joy to watch and a joy to work with everybody down there in making it all happen. I, I've worked with countless contractors in my 20-plus years as a building administrator and superintendent. I can honestly say, I have never worked with a crew like this before in terms of, you never saw anybody dogging work, constantly pulling their levels out of their back pockets and checking and rechecking. They were as fussy as if the field were theirs, you know? It was, it was great to watch.
In regards to the timeline, is it still around October?
Yes, yeah. Yep. So we're good. I mean, we're in great shape, and like I say, you know, we should be able to get some, some games in while we're waiting. But there's a, there's a couple of glitchy things, too, about where we're adding the two lanes, for instance, and the D zones. Those got paved with bituminous, and is it called the catup? That's macadam, right? It was, it's a macadam pavement. And even if, even if the contractors were not busy and can come in immediate, you would still have a three-week window, because you can't put the underlayment of the track material on fresh pavement. It has to cure for a minimum of three weeks, right, Jack? Is that, that's what they were saying, right?
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days. So there would have been a little delay anyway with that. I got this, this summer, and I, I don't want to summarize it incorrectly, so I want to read something to you. This is a new law, and it's section 189, E through H, general statutes, and E specifically says, "For the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, and each fiscal year thereafter, each regional council of governments shall receive," that's our COG, we're COG, right? "shall receive a regional services grant, the amount of which will be based on a formula to be determined by the secretary." Okay? Except for, and I won't get to that, oh yeah, I have to, except that, "For the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and each fiscal year thereafter, 35% of such grant monies shall be awarded to regional councils of government for the purpose of assisting regional education service centers," okay, CES, "in merging their human resources, finance, or technology services with the services provided by the municipalities within the region." Okay? So what does that mean? It means that there's the potential, starting in, it looks like 2018, that through grants from the state of Connecticut, CES can receive a grant that would allow the merger of all of the CES catchment towns, their human resources, so they would take over the human resources of all those districts, or their finance department, or their technology, or all three, depending. Okay? It's a little frightening. I like our human resources department.
Yeah.
And finance department, and IT department. And I think they do a superior job at everything that they do. And I don't know that CES could provide, I mean, CES is a great organization, don't get me wrong, but when you start combining, say, a human resources department or organization for how many towns in the CES catchment?
Crazy with the amount.
10 or 12? You know? And then you have, on top of that, you have a place like Bridgeport.
Yeah.
And imagine, how much attention would we get, you know, if our, if we had to do a posting for a job that we wanted to fill very quickly? Okay? So, you know, this is just curious. I mean, obviously, there's a couple of years intervening here before this becomes a possibility, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention. It's probably something that we want to talk to JP about, and any of our representatives or senators that we come into contact with, because I think this could have some, some very big implications for the future.
Have you heard anything else about it?
No.
From other superintendents?
No. It's summertime, and like I say, this just came out a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure that, you know, as soon as we start having our typical monthly meetings, it'll be on everybody's agenda.
Yeah, I haven't, we don't meet in the summer as well, so September, when we meet again, there'll be a CES, I'll keep you on the loop.
Ask about that, yeah, please.
And, you know, they, they have a strong lobbyist, and I think you're 100% that we have to stay close with the state legislators, senators, and reps that represent us, because it's, this is coming from the top, the state. All regionalism, they're all trying to regionalize things, and it's not to the best interest if, you know, of every town or, you know, city.
Right. I mean, like I say, you know, we do a, I think we do an outstanding job in all three of our departments, and I would hate to see the services that we're doing get diminished in any way, shape, or form by something, you know, like this.
Well, would something like this have to go through every town would have to agree with, you think? I mean, that's the thing. I mean, if not all the towns that are in that area don't agree to it, then, plus, don't, wouldn't we have to fill out the grant application anyway?
That's what I was thinking.
So if we don't want to do it?
Don't fill out the application.
Don't fill out the application, just, well, we don't want to do it. You know? Let's hope it's that simple.
Let's hope, okay. We'll find out more. I have not gotten a summary on this bill from our attorney yet.
Yeah.
So I want to see what he has to say. They usually provide us with some, some background on it.
Can we maybe have JP or somebody come to one of the meetings in September, and maybe Carlos by that point would have had a CES meeting?
Or maybe bring it up to him beforehand, so he can do some research on it.
And have the, yeah.
And let him come in and explain it better.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's a good idea. And we could have a conversation with Evan, too.
Yeah. Okay. And then the last thing that I have, the oil tank update at Stepney. We ran into, first of all, I want to thank Jack and Gabby publicly for the foresight to hire a consulting company to guide us on this, because, you know, we're not oil tank people, okay? And there's a lot of rules and regulations about varied oil tanks, particularly in public places, that you want to be very, very careful of. And I am just so glad that we had a consultant onsite every minute that the crew was there to take that tank out of the ground and put the new tank in the ground, make sure that the specifications were met, and everything was done correctly. Unfortunately, we also found out, though, that the pit that the old tank was in, okay, now you've got to picture this, because it's right alongside the building, by the music room, basically, between the sidewalk and the building, and it's bedrock there. There's only a thin layer of topsoil about this dig. And so the original tank that was in the ground there was jackhammered out of stone, so it created kind of a vault, okay? And then the pipes into the building went underneath the breathe, the walkway in the hallway, okay, to get to the boiler room, okay? What they found when they pulled the old tank was that the vault was two feet shallower than it should have been, okay? And so that tank that's been in there, probably, I mean, we were lucky it didn't fail, is what our consultant said, because there was not enough earth on top of that tank, and it could have imploded. And so we had to bring in a crew to jackhammer two feet of bedrock out of that hole again, which held us up for a couple of days.
So it sunk, essentially, you're saying?
It wasn't constructed properly.
It wasn't constructed properly. The carve-out, this is an 8,000-gallon tank, just to give you some perspective, actually, I have a photo I can pass around. The, I wonder, Jack?
Yeah.
Could you maybe, if I could find this photo very fast, do you think I could email it to you?
Isn't this the same size as the truck?
Email it to me.
All right. Let me, let me do a quick thing here, you guys, because I think this is, this is worth taking a look at. I'll send you three pictures here, Jack, by email. So anyway, we had to, we had additional costs. We had to eat on this because of that stuff. So I think this is about an $8,000 overage that we have to absorb, and we'll do it out of this year's budget, our operating budget, because this was bonded, so there was a fixed amount for this bond project. So we'll have to take care of it out of emergency repairs or something to that effect.
Don't you feel the pressure now while we're all just waiting? You know, we're all staring at your back. I wonder what's taking so long?
Kind of turn them, I don't know what it is. Every time I send a picture by email, it turns it on its side.
Yeah. Maybe I have to edit it.
Why does that happen?
I don't know about you guys, I haven't eaten dinner yet, so now I'm waiting.
No guilt.
Just have to go get ice cream afterwards.
That's dinner.
Okay.
Okay. So that just gives you the flavor for where the location of the tank was. This is the music room over here. These are big steel containment structures that they put in to prevent collapse from happening while men are working in the pit. So, next one, Jack?
Sure.
And then, you can see, there, you know, the guys are down in there, and I'll show you another unexpected there, but that, just to give you a sense of the size of the tank and how big it is, and where they're standing. You can see the ear was, was not deep enough. They had to go jackhammer two more feet of, of stone out in order to fit the tank in there by the correct specifications, otherwise it wouldn't have been an approved site. The other thing that happened was there's these things that you saw in the backside. Go back one more slide, Jack. Or Jack, I'm sorry. These concrete footings here, they're not actually footings, they're just, they're called deadmen, they're just concrete weight, okay? We couldn't save the previous concrete weight there, they, they got destroyed because we had to jackhammer up stuff, so there was some additional cost in bringing in new deadmen. With the deadmen, the tank ultimately gets strapped to those deadmen, because oil is lighter than water, and if for any reason you got a lot of water into that vault, you could actually raise the tank out of the ground, okay? And so that's what that's all about. But I think that, you know, the pictures there, is that me doing that?
It's a smart word.
Yeah, it's okay. I think that just gives you a flavor for, you know, how big a job that that was and how it is.
So sometimes things are grandfathered in when they, at the time that it was built, I'm sure it met specifications, I'm sure it was looked at, but perhaps it was a risk keeping it, or it wasn't grandfathered in?
Jack, was it, I mean, was it our, it was our consultant's conjecture that, that would not have met, even back then?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
So we don't know what that, what that's all about.
Any other part of the warranty, too? We have to ensure that this tank is warranted for its lifespan.
And it could have imploded.
That was the feedback from the company, the manufacturer of the tank.
Wow.
Yeah. No. We find these things, you know? Every time we turn a stone over, you find something sometimes that you wonder, you know, it was like that missing girder. Remember when we did the roof project here, and somebody had cut through the girder to fit something, and then never rewelded the girder together, you know? And so you had a weak spot. So, you know, as we find those things, we fix them. But unfortunately, finding them and fixing them, there's always some hidden cost that you didn't anticipate. Fortunately, we didn't hit any of that on the Turf Field, to speak of, to speak of.
It's not done yet.
It's not done.
Two, 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 two.
So that's, that's what I had, John has this, what, like 40-minute presentation on PD.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, about 40 minutes. It's exciting.
What's it going on there?
Can I leave?
Jim, I just had a question about enrollment. Is there any updates on enrollment?
Yeah, it's, I did not bring enrollment data, because it's too early to be reliable, okay? But I will tell you that I've already looked at some enrollment data for the three elementary schools, and we're about, was it 50, John?
Fifty.
We were 50 kids more than the projection, okay? So kids have moved into the district. Remember, we had to add a teacher this year, and so we're going to watch this, but it's really the October 1 enrollment that's the most critical for us to go by, but we'll have a pretty good sense probably the second weekend of September of where we are with enrollment.
Thank you.
But we're higher.
So I get to talk about professional development, and, and I want to just talk a little bit about where we were this summer, what happened this summer, and then the first couple of days of school. And I'm not going to talk about professional development throughout the year. But, you know, PD for education is like businesses research and development. You know, you spend the money at research and development to make the product better, and that's what PD's like for us. And if you look at this quote, and I'm not going to read it to you, but, you know, good PD really affects student learning, and positively affects student learning. And, and we know, and we feel that good professional development is, is worth the cost of what we spend. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our PD, but I'm going to go the right way. This summer, and I wanted to talk about what's happening with administrators and district leaders. This is just not something we do for teachers, it's something we do for all staff, certified and non-certified alike, from custodians doing different kinds of training in the summer, like how to lift, and asbestos training, things like that. But one of the things I wanted to talk about was what we did as our administrators. The first thing is, we had a day workshop with Jack and Jim and our SRO on the Alice training, and if I, I think we talked about that, that's a new way to look at security in the district, and we, these people gave it to the security committee and all the administrators first to kind of get feedback and how to roll it out to the staff. So we spent a day in here and throughout the building and classrooms, looking at this Alice training security. Much more to come for you guys, we'll talk a lot more about this as the year goes on, but that was a full-day training, and we felt it was well worth it. We do have two days of training for, for administrators on August 23rd and 24th. Every year we do this. This year, we have some specialized training. We have a PMT, which is physical management training. This is a law, state law, that every certified, no, not certified, every staff member in the building has to be trained on this physical management training. And what it is, is how to deal with students who have some behavioral issues, and it's hopefully to kind of step in so that it doesn't escalate, and how to de-escalate things. So we're going to start with that training for the administrators on, on August 23rd. We are also bringing in a outside speaker, her name is Michelle Copes, and she's going to talk about cultural competency. You know, Monroe, as we know, is not a very diverse district, but we do have some population of students who come from different cultures and different backgrounds, and we thought it's time for us to start some training in that. Now, we've done training in the past, a lot of training on cultural diversity and looking at ways to do this. This cultural competency is going to help us This cultural competency is gonna help us look at other people, how they view education and how they view the world, so that we can be more sensitive to that. So we're having that speaker come in. Every year, we do classroom observation calibration, which means we look at videos of classroom lessons, and we calibrate, making sure that we're all looking for the same things, and we're all marking and evaluating it the same way. So we're doing that again this year. And as you guys know, every year, the administrators read a book, and we have book talks. And this year, our book is True North by Bill George. And it's, it's subtitled Discovering Your Authentic Leadership. So it's how to be better leaders, how to use your experiences to be a better leader. So Jim's gonna really lead us in that. And we're gonna look at administrative scenarios, what's happened in the district, what could happen in district, and how we would all deal with that, and kind of talk that out. And we always talk about the laws, because every year, we have, you know, 10, 15 education laws that come out of the legislature that we have to deal with. So we're gonna talk about that. So this is what we're gonna do as administrators for those two days and one day during the year. We did have summer institutes, and I think I may have told you about these before school ended, but I, I just wanna kind of go over these now. Last year, we did Google certification, it was a huge success, teachers loved it, the Google Classroom. This year is the next level of certification, and it's gonna be two days, right, Jack, two days?
Yes.
Two days, and there are 27 staff members who volunteered to come in during the summer to, to do these trainings. Same thing with the Columbia Teachers, Columbia Teachers College Readers Workshop. You know, these were, this was four days, 26 staff members volunteered. In the past, we've sent people to New York, but this year, we had such a large interest that we brought the Columbia trainers here, which is a lot cheaper. So, four days, 26 staff. The other thing that we, that we're doing in, starting in the middle school and kind of moving up and down the grades, is that we're looking at how to differentiate in the classroom, especially classrooms that have, that are mixed levels. So we had a two-day workshop, 21 staff members, again, this was in June, right the day after school was out. 27, 21 staff members came to that from the middle school staff, some administrators, and they were trained in this. This woman who did the training was a state trainer. She's retired, but she came back to work with us, and now she's gonna come back six more times during the year. Same thing with Columbia Teachers College, they're coming back throughout the year to, to help us get this differentiation model up and running and more focused in the middle school. In the, in the past, we've done some training. But like everything, we've trained a certain amount of staff, then the staff changes and moves and things happen, and the new staff hasn't been trained. So we're really looking at differentiation and how to work in the middle school. And you guys know, we've talked about this, that the, the state of Connecticut adopted the next-generation science standards. And so we had 37 staff members who, who are in, who teach science, come in for two days to look at these standards and make sure that we are on board with that and we, our lessons are part of that. So that was the summer institutes, we had a lot of staff members who volunteered a ton to come in and do this, and we're really happy about that. We do have those three professional development days in August, and I just, again, I'm not gonna read all this, but I just kinda wanna focus, we do provide professional development specifically targeted for specific teachers. So the National Arts Standards are out, and our art and music teachers are gonna spend a lot of the two days looking at the National Arts Standards and how our curriculum matches those art standards, specifically just for art and music. Again, we're looking at those science teachers. The special ed teachers and the psychologists are working together on reviewing IEPs, making sure that we're writing them the same way, and making sure that we're following what we need to follow. And they're gonna be working together, part of the two days, looking at that. It's difficult, because we want our special ed teachers to also be part of the academic professional development, because they're gonna be in the classroom. So we're giving them a couple of hours to look specifically for special ed stuff, and then they're gonna go and, and work with their teachers. You know, we do have speech and language pathologists, and one of the things that they've been asking for is a stuttering work, workshop. So we are providing that for them. You know, the library and media people are looking at how to make our libraries more like Learning Commons and have assured experience for that to happen. And then we're gonna start PMT training, as I said, it's mandated for everyone. We're gonna start PMT training with art, music, and PE people. And, you know, we are always looking for collaboration time. So if you look at that, you can see what's happening in the middle school, which is different, that's happening at the elementary school, which is different, that's what's happening at the high school. And you can see that the high schools look at SAT reading and writing strategies. Because again, you know, SATs are our new way we're assessing our students. And just over on the side, we provide professional, three days of professional development to our 98 paraprofessionals. And this year, before school starts, we have a day for our paraprofessionals to, to have PD. We used a program called Compass Learning, which gives them strategies and how to help in the classroom. Professional development is really important for us, I, I, and I, we really see the benefits for that. But we look at effective professional development. So there are five strategies for effective professional development, and that we try to follow. You know, the, the first one talks about that PD must be ongoing, there needs to be time to practice the PD. And if you look at what we do with the Columbia Teachers College Readers and Writers, they've come out five times throughout the year. So the teachers are able to practice some of the, the skills and some of the, the lessons. And then they, the people come back and talk about, how did it go, what do you need, what more information do you need? So that happened five times. Same thing with the Math and Focus that we had. They came out again five times during the year to provide support for the teachers. So number one, needs to be ongoing, there needs to be time to practice. Number two, the principle, we have to offer support. We can't just say, here's a one-hit wonder, go do your stuff. We have to offer support. And when you look at Google Classroom, they're gonna be spending the two days here in Google Classroom, but when they go back to their schools, the tech integrators will be there to support them in what they do with the Google Classroom. You know, four days in the summer, and then, you know, two days in the summer, and then the time with the tech leader after school works out real well. Principle three, it must be active. You gotta look at, we gotta look at the differentiation institute. This was two days of teachers being very active in, in learning this whole differentiation model. They were on their feet, they were writing lessons, they were working together, collaboration, collaborating together to come up with units. They were very active, and this person's coming back six times throughout the year to work with those teachers and other teachers to get this model up and running. Number four principle is it needs to be specific to the teachers. As I said, you look at the next-generation science standard, science teachers, middle, elementary, and high school. It's by subject, it's by school. And the last one is modeling. We, we wanna make sure that they see these, these strategies used in, in the best way. So again, let's look at Math and Focus, or Readers and Writers Workshop. Those experts come in, model in a, right in a classroom while teachers are watching some of the strategies. Then they go back from, go out of the classroom and talk about that. So teachers are seeing the modeling. And you know what, we also feel modeling starts from, with us. So we don't just expect professional development for the teaching staff or the paraprofessional staff. We as administrators wanna make sure that we're modeling good learning. So that's why we have our two days, that's why we do our reading, and, and always try to improve ourselves too, because we feel that everybody can grow. So that's kind of an overview of what's been happening with PD this summer and the first couple of days. And we do have three more days throughout, throughout the year that we offer professional development. And Sheila works very hard to make sure everybody needs them. Any questions about PD?
This is a, an enormous investment of time, John, Sheila, and really all of the administrators in the district, to make sure that this, this kind of thing is done, and it's done well, year after year here in Monroe. And I like the, the five principles, the one in particular is that recurring and ongoing training that happens. And the TC model, the Teachers College Reading and Writing model, I think is just exceptional. I've watched the trainers come into a classroom, there'll be half a dozen teachers sitting in the back of the classroom while the teacher, for instance, demonstrates a mini lesson. And then they go through the court, the lesson, and they go through the work with the kids. And then they go back into a meeting room, the six teachers and the, and the trainer. And they actually debrief, what did you see, well, how did it work? You know, here's what we did, here was my intent with that particular piece, et cetera. And it's constant and ongoing feedback. And then the teachers go back, and they actually do these mini lessons in their classrooms, and get individual feedback and group feedback from that as well. And that goes on throughout the course of the year. So that's really powerful, it's really powerful. And, you know, John bird-dogging this and Sheila bird-dogging that is very much appreciated. Thank you. Any questions for John on PD?
I was just gonna mention that I, paraprofessional development, when it's, it's done, and then assume that somebody's going to take on what they've just learned. It doesn't, but the way these five principles are laid out makes sense. And it, it helps on making sure somebody retains the information and is putting it to practice. So I think it's awesome.
It's a 360 view of it.
Yeah, I think it's great.
We, we've known for decades that if you, if you do PD with teachers, if teachers don't go back into their classroom within five days and actually try what they learned, it was for nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, it's, it's really, it's gone. So that is a critical piece. And you guys have just been PD'd, you know that, right? This is part of the Board of Education, ongoing professional development training, to keep you informed of, you know, how we're spending our time and, and what we're doing in terms of trying to reach our goals and our action plans, and making sure that we're guiding the district in the direction that it needs to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And I love the opportunity to share this. The CAE-CAPS convention is in your packet, starting on page 31. It's a little later this year, it's usually a week or two earlier in November. It's the 18th and 19th this year, the Mystic Marriott again. You know, if you, if you are interested in attending, we make very good savings by registering early for any of the workshops. It has been our experience that the Friday workshops are terrific and, and jam-packed with good information. Saturday tends to be a little bit weaker, okay? So if you're, if you're interested in going, just let Terry or I know, and we'll be glad to get you registered and get the packets out and all that other stuff. We've generally carpooled on the way down on Friday morning in the past, and we could probably work all that out again. I see Tony Wagner is, is the speaker, general session speaker on Innovation Lab. Jack, you're a fan of Wagner, correct?
Yeah, change of leadership.
Change of, yeah. So it looks to be a good, a good conference. And CAE, CAE-CAPS have gotten together to do this for a number of years. So let us know if you're interested, we'll be glad to get you all set up. On page 34 in your packet, we have the approval of the Massey High School lunch prices. If you remember, and I can't remember which meeting it was, June 6th or the one before that, that you approved all of the, of next year's pricing changes with the exception of Massey High Schools lunch ones. So that's the only one on the page that is of any importance tonight. And so I would be looking for a motion to approve the Massey lunch fees.
You got a motion to approve the Massey lunch fees. What is the change?
Gabby, why don't you run story?
Sure, if you recall, you also, and I don't remember which meeting this was at either, you agreed to take Massey off the National School Lunch Program.
Yeah.
Which allows us to kind of make the lunches a little better portion-sized, a little bit just better. We don't have to use whole wheat pasta anymore, we can use, sorry, plain boring white pasta, which holds up better in the cooking process and just tastes better. We don't have to do whole grain pizza crust either anymore. We can serve six-ounce burgers instead of three-ounce burgers, which, I don't know if you've ever seen the burgers, but they're, they're pretty skinny when they're three ounces, they're, they're pretty tiny. We can also offer slightly larger portions of boar's head. And the, the big popular one was sushi on Fridays. So that's really why the prices are going, we're, we're still offering a base lunch and a base breakfast. That's what our students who are on free and reduced will be offered. If they choose to, I don't, I'm not sure what the term would be. I guess if they choose one of the other options, they would have to pay the difference between the free and reduced price and the all-apart price for that menu item. So, for example, the base lunch at Massey would stay the same at $3.35. If they chose to buy the sushi, they would have to pay the differential between the $6.99 and the $3.35.
What's the, am I missing it though, what's the actual, is there an actual price increase here?
Well, yes, because we never offered sushi before, and it's $6.99 as opposed to being $3.35.
The base lunch is the same.
Base lunch is the same?
Right, base lunch is always $3.35, that stays the same.
Okay.
Can every child order that lunch?
Which one?
The base lunch. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
At that, at that rate?
At that rate.
Okay.
And it, it includes an entree, two sides, and a milk, which is what it has always included.
I'm missing if there's a price schedule, I don't see it.
So it's on, it's on page 34, it's about a third of the way from the top. It says cafeteria prices, it says Massey breakfast. A base breakfast, for example, is $2. Do you see it, Sharon?
So, but the Massey, so Massey lunch, where it says special offerings, and then tells you that it's got the sandwich and soup salad bar, those prices stay the same as well?
No, those prices have got, we've never been able to offer that before.
So all of that's new?
Correct.
That's net new, the special offerings and the sushi? But the base lunch price stays the same year over year?
Correct.
Okay. And breakfast stays the same as well?
The base breakfast, which is, is the cereal bar, which would be cereal, fruit, milk, stays the same. If you choose to get a breakfast sandwich, which would be, you know, bacon, egg, and cheese, bacon, egg, and sausage, whatever, I mean, you know. Or if you choose specialty omelets or pancakes or waffles, those would be the equivalent prices that you see there. The other thing that's different is they're going to be offering the fresh meat and yogurt smoothies. That'll also be one of the options that they'll do at the after-school between the two and three. So for students or athletes who wanna pick up something to snack on.
Will the food truck slide in here eventually?
Um, we've, we've had some interesting conversations about the food truck. There's a concern as to where to actually put the food truck so that the students don't decide to make their lunches to go.
We'll have a food truck.
So, that's still kind of under discussion, how's that?
That was great.
Is there gonna be more stuff, like more types of food coming out as the year goes on?
Yes. I, I don't honestly know if the sushi is gonna be there that very first Friday, but it should be there soon, because I, I will be partaking of it on Fridays.
And just to reemphasize this, we can, at any time, we could cancel this and add on to the program we were on earlier.
But we can go back to the National School Lunch Program.
But with this, we're in control of the menu now.
Yes.
We have better control of the menu because we don't have this. One of the things that I know has been a, you know, there's been the portion size debate in issue. There's also been the question of taste and things like, if you ever know, if you've ever eaten up here, you don't have a salt shaker.
Yes.
You can't add salt to anything, which I know I shouldn't say, but sometimes you'd need a little salt. Because it's not just the portion sizes that are controlled, it's the sodium content, the sugar content, the, everything is controlled.
Didn't, didn't you even change, like, on the salad bar? I thought it was a fixed price, but now they can get it per ounce?
Correct.
So they don't have to get just a pre, okay, thank you.
And there'll be more protein options available at the salad bar. Usually what happens, what has happened in the past at the salad bars, you would only get, say, chicken on Monday, Tuesday, and then you get turkey on Wednesday and Thursday, and maybe you'd have ham on Friday. So now there will be more protein options as well as your vegetable, when you're, it's a little bit salad bar.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah, it's better, especially for the afternoon for the athletes, when the kids are starting to school for band or whatever.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Christine. So a motion by Alan, second by Christine, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Good. Okay. All right, that concludes new business. So we need to move to executive session to discuss some pending litigation. So would like a motion to go into executive session and include the superintendent and assistant superintendent.
So moved.
Second. Great. And we will adjourn from executive session.